Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Carabel Community Redevelopment Agency is Tuesday, July 18, 2017, 1:30 PM. We're at Carabel City Hall. Commissioner Allen can set an indication for us and then we'll set the pledge of allegiance flag.
All right, Father, we're so grateful that we got this beautiful day. Very nice, thankful Father, for now that we can come together to discuss things to make our city better, to ask your help with us in our wisdom and judgment, and do those things that we most appreciate for the citizens that live here in this community. Especially, Father, we ask you to put our national government in the fold and point toward an end to all conflicts and division, and we not come to some unity and some peace, and we not move forward to build this a nation as we should be. We ask all this of Jesus' name.
I believe Jesus is a good wife, and has a saving to the world, through the Republic, which is the same, one nation, under God, and in the visible, for the living, and for the dead.
Okay, we'll move right into roll call. We have Mr. Rock Pallas, Commissioner Cal Allen, Mayor La Paz, Mr. Bo May, Commissioner Keith Walden, and Courtney Keisha, who's today, and the city attorney, Mr. Hart. I'd like to ask that everyone had the opportunity to review the June 20th minutes, meeting minutes. Do you want to get to review that?
Does the motion get accepted?
All right, we have the motion by Mr. Pallas. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Right, and that's seconded by Mr. May. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. And we'll move on into staff reports. We have the CRA director's reports.
I am reporting on the research regarding the ownership of the Small Brick Building on Marine Street across from the River Wall Condos. Ms. Martha Murray, who owns the Bell House, had a survey done, and that survey determined that the brick building is not on her property, but the other property. I have talked to the real estate agent on that property, and she has it under contract, and she's hopeful that it's going to close soon and that the people who are buying it want to restore it. So I'm going to let that go through, and then we can move forward, see what we need to do with that. The report on the outstanding CRA grants, Mr. Rayers' grant is still outstanding, it's waiting on contractor. It's, I've talked to the contractor, the contractor's timed it up, but as soon as he gets the work finished, we'll give that reimbursed. The signage request from Martha Murray, I see she's not here yet, well, she's walking in the door now. I think Dan was going to report on that.
I can, I can report on that. Sorry, I could report on that.
Okay, fine, I didn't know, I thought maybe Ms. Keisha might report on it.
She can too.
Okay. All right.
Basically, like I said, from my review of the LDR, it just falls into one of those non-conforming, it's under the prohibitive section of the LDR, and it's any sign placed on public driveway. So there's, it just doesn't even allow for a special exception in the way it's written right now.
And, obviously, I had been asked to take a look at this also, to see if there wasn't any alternatives, and the only alternative that I could, that I could see was, obviously, I agree with Keisha's interpretation of it. The only other one is a little bit different, but it's, in some municipalities and jurisdictions, you'll have, you'll see signs, now these are paid for by the public, but they direct folks, they're like historic marker type signs, that'll say, you know, just, again, especially if the property is on the historical register or something else, usually you see them little brown signs, and they direct people with an arrow or a distance or something to a property. That may not be what Ms. Murray would like, as far as the nature of the sign and that sort of thing, but that, that would be, and it would require us, it would be the city would have, city or CRA would pay for it and place it, but that is something, that is something, that is one possibility, whereas off-site signage just, it's not.
Is there any comment? So basically, our, our LDR then really doesn't address it, we would have to probably do some type of resolution ordinance to adopt this new style?
Right, just, actually, it does address it and prohibits it, so we would have to change the LDR to allow it, and we'd want to be careful for what purposes we allowed it, but again, since it's kind of a, an attraction, it's difficult to get into promoting businesses, but where it has historical value or like an attraction type thing, I'm sure we could whip up some language to amend it, to allow it, or, again, I think you could go the purely public route, which would be, again, at our expense, to place it on public property, but directing folks, at least notifying folks that that property is there.
Really, this isn't something that the CRA can address, it has to be done by changing the LDR and by ordering an ordinance or resolution, and has to be done on the city's side, and we would have to probably do some, like, have research to make sure that we know what kind of sign, that, you know, if we're going to do this, what kind of signs we want to do in the future, because, you know, if you're looking at possibly a city on property out on Highway 98, will happen to be bombarded with requests to advertise businesses or other locations, and even that in front of Sands Park, you have to move forward carefully.
I mean, that's correct, but the CRA does have a decision to make, if you want to take on, would be, does the CRA, to kind of promote, obviously, historic places downtown, does the CRA want to, the CRA can put up its own signage, we have that power, so this would be a CRA sign directing, you know, members of the public and that sort of stuff towards the morehouse.
I like that approach, if we could look into it a little bit more.
And really, the discussion with Ms. Murray is, you know, is a sign like that, really what she needs, wants, is that, would that suffice? So, and, and I'm delinquent on responding to her, so I will, I can follow up with her on that.
Okay, let me ask Commissioner Allen now, do we have the funding to pay the attorney to follow up on that, and the funding to purchase the signage?
I don't have that information.
Okay, I can get the budget. I know we just went over the budget, and we, you know, we really don't have that, that extra funding, we just went over the budget, I mean, there's just nothing there, unless you could, if you wanted to point it out to me, where we, we have extra funding on that.
Well, I just heard the proposal, and I haven't had time to look into any of that, so I think we just put it in for possible consideration and see what we come up with.
Ms. May?
One of the options would be that the city would, CRA would approve a style of historical sign, and that, there are many cities around this part of Florida that have their own historical, you know, information, you know, that's not in the city.
Camera Allen. Here from Historical Society. We've been looking into the aspects of getting historical markers that indicated something was on the National Register, which is a whole process that does require a good bit of money. There is, however, a state marker for properties that are on the master site file, which that place is, and, and those would be places that were over 50 years old, would, could be, could be, and if they are, if they were here in 2009, you know, we had the survey of historical properties in Carabel, then we put all the buildings that were in that survey were put in the master site file, so that's already been done, both for her building and, say, for both building and different ones. There are state signs, there's a state sign program that's much less complicated than going for a National Register sign, and requires much less money, and might be the sort of thing that if a building owner who had a historical property wanted to do that, that, you know, they might do it themselves, and there might just be some routine language that the CRA would like to see put in there, but many of the CRAs, like in St. Andrews and other places, they have historical signs that are in front of the various properties in the CRA, telling people that, and they're, they're small, they're kind of like little shields that say the name of the house, but to me, it would be more informative if you had something about the property, like what year it was built, and what it's famous for, what it was used for, something like that. So there might be some alternatives in that sign program, plus I've got all the specs for the one that St. Andrews did, which has just never really seemed like the right thing to do here at this point, but I know Pat Bragdon had said to me that she was interested in purchasing one for the Bragdon Building, so if we could find out what a state sign would cost, which would probably be about a thousand dollars, or, so then we could find maybe two at the most, I, I don't know the exact figure, I think two, then you, you get on the list, and you get approved by Historical Society, and then you can get up their sign, you can get their, the metal sign, and then you tell them what you want to put on it. So maybe, that might not be what Ms. Murray's interested in, but if that would suffice, but you're right about the, the ground signs, all you have to do is be a registered historical place, like the museum has a sign, and they're just, but they don't tell you things at museums, or maybe they'd say Historic House, so I don't know that that would accomplish, it wouldn't promote the fact that we've got attractions in the CRA, which is what I was, I was thinking that we're talking about. If I could bring you back research on that, and had that be helpful, I'd be glad to do that, should you like me to.
Do you want Ms. Tamara to bring back any research on this, the state historical signage?
I was going to add, I miss my position, I'd like to know, Ms. Murray, I mean, is that what she's thinking, we won't be wasting time doing?
Yeah, that would be good, thank you. Um, is that all? Thank you.
All right, Hesha. I hadn't really thought about this particular set of circumstances. I'm certainly not opposed to any kind of signage that brings attention to, for our community, and certainly for me as a business person, to the property. I don't think it would need to be one or the other, though. I mean, if, let's say, for instance, and I'm just sort of thinking with brand-new information here, let's say we could get some sort of a state marker that designates that this is one of Carabel's historic spots, and it goes on some list somewhere so people traveling through would say, oh, let's go see what that one is. That would not be a problem for me, but it would probably not keep me from also putting up a sign that said the name of my business, and a phone number, or a website, or something like that as well, so I don't see them as needing to be one or the other. And eventually, I would like to go through the process of getting on the National Historic Registry, which the House is very qualified for, but again, where that placard would go would, I, I can't picture anywhere where that would be very visible in relation to the house, to a passerby, because of the way the house is situated, so that would be like, okay, so where do I put the plaque? On the front of the house, where a voter with a scope might be able to see it, travel by, I don't know. So, questions?
So, do you want us to follow, have Ms. Tamara follow up on this, or, or no?
I think it probably would be a good idea, I don't want to have to incur expense to do that, but it would benefit others in this community, I mean, I'm not the only one sitting with a historic property here, there are a number of them, so.
If you, or do you, do you want, you want to do that evidently, or you wouldn't have submitted some?
I'm always glad to be here, I mean, that's something I've actually researched, I just can't pull it out of my brain.
Yes, and, and it might, there would be some information that we could use in the future.
I know Bo and I talked about the sign, and we wanted some kind of a sign, I think, open with state.
I was just going to make up my own, they put it on the side of the building, say, historic building.
Well, and again, the, the issue that had popped up was off-site signage, so she can put, you know, any signage on your own property that conforms, has all the information available, but obviously, I totally understand where Ms. Murray's coming from, because it's, her property is backed up, you know, she can put a sign up there, but can people see that sign? So, that's the, you know, can, can we help put, we're probably not a lot more than breadcrumbs to that sign? Yes, but we just can't probably put the, the advertising sign that she put on her property and want also, that's the current restriction.
Does that, does that go on the website, Tamara? So people who are traveling around, they follow the?
And there's a little wordlet that comes out periodically, like, not every year, but the website's up to date. Okay, so, will, will next month be sufficient time for you, okay, will, can you, for, for agenda? That's okay?
Just one other thing that I might add, this city is basically supported by tourism and people interested in history, as well as, you know, the secret, but anything that contributes to that, I think is always a plus.
If it's CRA money, you can only promote things in the CRA, but who would decide when to stop? Who would decide who gets one and doesn't get one? And, and if the city pays for them, it's one thing, if the CRA pays for them, it's another. The restrictions on off-site signage are pretty strict. When I bought my building, I had to take down four other people's signs off the building, because technically, they weren't supposed to be there, and they'd been there for years, but they weren't supposed to be there. I told them if they wanted to pay me for them, I would pick them up there if I approved of what the sign was, but even that would have been illegal, so, nobody did. I think it's a sticky widget.
It is a little sticky, but it won't hurt to have Ms. Tamara, for, for future references, and we can think about it, come the next month, and we can see what we may want to do. Yes, it would be difficult deciding who gives a sign, who doesn't get a sign, who buys the sign, where they're located exactly. Just move on. Are, is there any other discussion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Kelly?
Now, Kelly, I think it might be interesting, after the course of Tamara's research, if she made a list of places that are eligible for such signage in the community. When the historic report was done, there were in excess of 250 historic buildings noted in that report. Obviously, they don't all need a sign, but I think the understanding of the historic nature of this community might be of great value, both in promotion for tourism, as Commissioner Allen says, and for community pride as well. I think it's something that is not as acknowledged as it could be even the 100-year-old. I would encourage that kind of a list, and where the signs go, and who pays for them, all that, obviously can come in a discussion mode. Obviously, the CRA signs would be in the CRA district, whether or not the CRA is the club shows to pay for them, whether they could be co-opted with an owner, whatever, but I think to have a list might be of great value for the city itself. Which one?
I will say, the Atlantico, I'm trying to remember, I think they have about 14 historical signs, talking about this, on the River Wall, they've been out seven years, and they need to be replaced, and so they came to the TDC to find half of the replacement that, and that's something too, when you, you know, we know from the signs down here, the billboard at Sands Park, you know, once we, we do that, then we've got to be ready to have renewal and replacement on the signage, so we need to make sure there's, the people have future funds, the budgets that we should be able to handle. The TDC might be able to assist with the initial purchase, you know, if we manage, if we manage something like that, since they are helping out with Atlantico to replace their signs, just who forgot? And is there any more discussion? All right, then, we'll move on to the city attorney, do you have a report, sir?
I do not, not beyond the, what we already discussed.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Public comment? All right, then, we'll move on to new business, and this was brought up to the city commission, it's going to be on the city commission meeting agenda. Item one of the new business institution of launching fees at the Marine Street Boat Ramp, discussion of possible action regarding recommendations to the city commission. So I just asked for it to be on the agenda, so we could discuss it, there is three commissioners here today on this board, and we all, and with the appointed members, we can discuss this and make a recommendation of what our ideas are regarding having launching fees at the Marine Street Boat Ramp. So, someone like to start the discussion? We talked about it briefly before in the past.
I have mixed emotions about that, I know it would be a great revenue source, we do get a lot of people down here because of the freebies that we offer, I don't know how it would impact if we started putting a, a fee on it, I wonder if there might be a possibility to do it on a voluntary basis, that people would be willing to donate a little cash for being able to bring their boat down, but those that couldn't, so I don't know, I have no idea on that, but it, it would be a great revenue source, but the fact that we're parked all over town on that boat ramp, that's, I think, creates a difficulty in figuring out the force.
I would make it a launch fee and a parking fee, and just because you park down on the middle of town doesn't mean you have to pay the fee to launch your boat, and all that money would go toward the money we've spent in buying the property and making the parking facility for the 37 parking spots we have, for 110 boats that were in town last weekend. So we accommodated 37 of them, but we missed the other 65 or whatever. A launch fee, in my mind, is that, other places have launch fees, if it drove away 10 boats, I would go for that, and I wouldn't mind if we lost 10 boats, considering the amount of money some of these people do, do not spend in town.
I would just also add that we're going to have to make team, pardon my, we're going to have boat, this would go towards, I would like the money to go towards making, two boats, actually, because, I mean, that's going to be arena, city money at some point.
I'd also add that I think the people that appreciate those two ramps, and see the improvement that we make on it, would not be that objectionable, so, and when I used to haul my boat around, I always paid a fee, and it was on an honorary basis, which honorary, be clear in my mouth, but that's just a thing.
Commissioner, do you have thoughts on it, sir?
Uh, I don't, okay. Yeah, that, that we don't, but they, I, I will say, as Mr. Bo said, they, they don't spend a lot of money in town, you know, they come, they might get gas here, they might get ice, but they come and go back to where they came from, I know. I'd look, I'm in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of charging it to the local system, and I don't know if we would go countywide or citywide in that part, because they already pay taxes and, or do community service and such, that, you know, they should be able to use our, our programs for free, but to the, to the visitors that don't contribute a lot to our community, that they come and they love to use our facilities, it would hurt them to help us take care of ours, so. And I, I know I've shown you all this before, but I just wanted to remind you, there's, you have the St. Mark's Boat Ramp, and I've brought you pictures of that before, and it's kind of a rundown, it's voluntary, but their collection boxes is rundown, that they, they hang these on there, tear off down here, put this with your money in the box, and then call the hiring policeman, and they hang this on their, ready area. And then over at the newer facility, the Locola County Launch there, is that Spring Creek, is that what that is?
Showpoint.
Showpoint, thank you. They've got a nicer, this, you know, since it's modern day, you'd probably go for an iron horse, excuse me, an iron policeman collection box like this, and of course, all of this was paid for with grant money, there's a big sign over there that tells the grant, so we, we would have some signage telling about these two little things hold the, hold the tickets, and then, and put your money and ticket in here, but we wouldn't have, we couldn't put a sign like this, so, at this point, I don't know how it would be paid for, we'd just have to wait till mid-year to see, you know, if there's money to do that, but.
Land, landlord charges, if you put in an Eric, Eric Piper's launching charges, if you have a boat in either Marina and/or Sea Quarters, you pay your launch fee at those places, we don't charge for the Fourth Street or, or the two at the end of the street, I'm sure that Sunset Isle, or whoever owns that over there, will be charging as soon as they get some more boats in there. They built an extra boat ramp, so they have two now, and when they fill up and there's no place to park all the trucks that are over there, they'll charge too.
And then I, I, you mentioned the Fourth Street Boat Ramp, would that, if, so we have to think of the repercussions if we are charging a fee at one ramp, and then not at the other, would that, would we overrun the Fourth Street Boat Ramp? Would we go?
Would that, would we be overrun if the Fourth Street Boat Ramp, we would be, you know, just parked all over 98 of the side streets, or would we charge a fee at the Fourth Street Boat Ramp? It's possibly we charge $10 at one and $500 at the other.
The boat goes in the water the same way and comes out, I think. It's not a $5 difference.
Well, right.
And then you've got the county ramp across the river.
Yeah.
How about a sticker in the car or a permit that you could put in your windshield to park anywhere in Caravelle? And you buy that on an annual basis or monthly basis, or whatever.
It's a consideration, of course, now those that would qualify, if it was decided that local people would not be charged, then they would have some kind of sticker or something that they would pay. So hopefully they would appreciate it.
We got a $45,000 truck and a $75,000 boat, you can afford a $10 launch fee.
And, yes sir, Mr. Steve?
Just have a couple comments. When the office for the water partnership and the Blueprint Festival is down the dock.
I can barely hear you.
Okay. When the office for the Caravelle Blueprint Festival was down in the dock, I occasionally talked to a few people who came down here, I asked them why they came to Caravelle. I mean, all things equal, is it because we don't have a fee? No one indicated that. One thing that did indicate were the facilities, including the fish cleaning station. I think there are possibly other reasons, other ways to raise money. I mean, one is the use of the fish cleaning station and even having a voluntary place there for someone to tip out that facility if they use it. And I've always thought that if, if, I mean, this is capital improvement, but I imagine most boaters who put their boat in the water and come out with saltwater fishing gear and saltwater infused boats would love to have a place to wash out their boat. And I could see where you could have a fund, a way to make money, providing some sort of facility where someone could pull their boat up and rent off their equipment. I think those things are things that when a boater is coming from Tallahassee and are thinking about where they want to go, they look at the convenience for parking, they look at the facilities, they look at the access to where they want to go ultimately to fish. And we're very competitive in any of those categories, so just a couple of.
And so over it, we'll call on, and thank you Steve and Showpoint and St. Mark's, these are volunteer, and some people may not purchase it. They have law enforcement that goes around from time to time, checks for the local stickers and checks to see if it's hanging up on their rearview area, and they might see that they are not getting a warning or something. That's how that works. And you?
I have a partner.
Do we have anything, any messages that we would like to send to the commission? Because this will be a new commission agenda.
Is there something to vote on for recommendation?
We could, we could make a recommendation, if the vote that we all agree, and send that recommendation to the commission.
I guess I'd like, since I've passed, I'd like to make a motion that we make a recommendation from the city commission that we do charge for both the Fourth Street Boat Ramp and the Marine Street Boat Ramp. Local Caravelle residents are excluded via a permit of some sort, in that we consider a launch fee as opposed to a parking fee of $10 per launch.
All right. Did you all hear that motion for a recommendation to take to the commission, commission to consider?
Can I answer that? Do we also consider?
No.
No, can't you answer that?
That would be.
You have to make your own motion.
Oh, I'll make one.
Oh, I'm having a hard time hearing down here, so I'll make sure I get this right. You recommended to the commissioners that we charge a $10 fee with an exemption for Caravelle city limits?
Caravelle residents, property owners of Caravelle.
But is that in the city limits, or, I mean, how would you term, because land art's considered Caravelle?
Anybody that pays Caravelle city taxes.
Okay, so in the city limits.
We can, we're open after we get the motion second, and we can discuss this, because I'm not sure I understand totally the ins and outs of that.
And he said for the Fourth Street Boat Ramp and the Marine Street Boat Ramp.
I'll second it, so we can discuss it.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Powless and second by Mr. Bay, and do we have discussion? Yes, sir?
I'm going to discuss it, Alan. I think we should do the parking, and we should also look at other avenues of revenue, such as, as Steve said, maybe making a promotion, like somebody could say, "I fish Caravelle", and they could get a year-round sticker that goes in their car and they can pay, you know, it could help promote, the city could help promote the fishing, and they would also be paying something for that sticker or something, you know, just a number of different ideas that would generate some income. I do not see that it will hurt the number of people that come here to fish. And we put a lot of time into it, I think we should make it a business. And regarding washing boats, I think that something like that is not something the city should do, and the CRA, that should be a private business, if somebody wants to have a boat washed. It'd be a great idea, I think you could probably wash a lot of boats, sell a lot of beer and a lot of soda pop, but I don't see.
They need some drainage, like the car wash.
They would need drainage, so it'd be a business. We want more business.
I think it would get real complicated in saying who pays taxes, who doesn't, and so that would involve some more hoops to run through to get some kind of documentation that you own property or don't own property. And a lot of the local people around here that use those ramps don't own property. It just really gets complicated when we get into all that, in my opinion. And since, you know, the deal is here, we're trying to make a recommendation to the city, this even gets more complicated.
And that is, that is just a recommendation that the commission can take on and expand on, and certainly, I don't think folks would have to show their tax bill, because we have a lot of people here that rent. But I think possibly, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but Mr. Powless, that you may have been referring to people that actually live in.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking people that live in city. I was saying, I could think of a.
And that could be, that could be easily changed by a quarter. Yes, Mr. Gray.
Or even Franklin County.
That's what I was going to say, is possibly make it Franklin County. I mean, you're going to have people up 67 on one side of the street that live in Caravelle and on the other side don't pay taxes. They aren't going to be happy with that, so I think maybe just Franklin County, if we try to do a local resident thing, but I don't know what the visitors will think about that, but, you know.
Atlantico has a fee, do we know how they charge there? Does anyone know?
Or maybe the residents, or Franklin County residents could get a yearly tag for some kind of fee, you know, just to kind of help with it, or something. We choose.
That's actually what they offer, they offer a little color, they offer a beauty boat ramp fee that's fairly reasonable. $10 is the topic, and using a place where.
To all residents.
To all residents.
Okay, so at this point, we have a recommendation from Mr. Powless to do charge for the Fourth Street and Marine Street Boat Ramps to local Caravelle residents, and they would be excluded with some type of a permit, and consider a launch fee at $10. And we have a motion by Mr. Powless, a second by Mr. Bay, just to send that as a recommendation to the city, not to the city commission. Do we have any more discussion?
Certainly, we have to the city.
Certainly, that's up to the city to charge the fee.
That's why us two appointees can be so brazen.
And I would think that the commission doesn't have to use that actual wording, that's just a recommendation that the commission can expand on. Is that correct, Mr. Hartman?
The recommendation is.
Well, it's just for, with Caravelle residents.
Right, we were just talking about that.
Do you mind if.
Obviously, drivers.
We can't hear you, Dan.
Driver's license would be the most straightforward, and then you've got folks, as you were talking about, water bills, tax bills, second homes, so their driver's license is going to be elsewhere. Yeah, you all need to really, I mean, do you want us to, I mean, do you all, your decision?
Well, it would go to, it needs to go to the commission.
Yeah, but.
And then let the commission direct you.
Okay, yeah, and the commission can direct me, and everybody who sits on the commission can think about it, is, yeah, how do we, if it's related to paying taxes, then it's kind of more expansive.
I think one very simple way to do it is, help kind of point out, make it, I mean, it could be advertised that local Caravelle residents do not need to pay. Word of mouth that could get out that they don't need to pay, and the rest of it's honorary. I mean, I don't think we're going to have a police officer down there enforcing it on a regular basis, and, you know, that way at least you're bringing in some revenue. I believe in the next five years, you're going to be scratching your head, trying to figure out how you're going to maintain the parking lots down there.
I agree. And so, the mayor, I mean, the mayor, as far as the way that's done, is close to being an honor system, but it also, when they come down, they open the box, look at who's paid, look at the hangers of the cars. And having done that before, where I would sometimes just go buy at St. Mark's, and I would buy an annual pass. So we could have just simply upfront here at City Hall, city residents coming in and pay $5 or something to get an annual pass, that they can prove that they pay taxes in the city. So they have an annual pass they hang in their car to launch, and we have a year's old party, but launching, and then everybody else would, they could also come in, buy an annual pass, it's probably a hundred dollars, or some amount, that would save them money if they're down there all the time launching their boat. And then, otherwise, it's on a purpose basis, they put it in the box and rip it and hang it. But that was someone down there opening that box and checking, and really it's hanging in your car, that that's kind of tricky too, is, you know, we're kind of almost, most places that I've been, you park your car, you launch, you park, so, which would seem, and people still find ways to trick the system. But I'd say that would be the most straightforward, and the commission will direct, will provide the specifics on who gets the discounted rate, basically, so you can actually discount $5 for the year, just to probably cost of issuing a little thing in the pass.
There is a police, there is a police person down there now checking tags and giving tickets. So I mean, some enforcement would, would, random enforcement.
Oh, yeah, you will pay. Pounds of law, because the people who don't pay will have, you probably need to add it to the list of offenses, or whatever you want to call it, but it may have to be a $5 ticket. So we'll make that up.
Maybe a $5.
People who pay.
I think that's something that, you would draft.
City.
In the city.
Yeah. I mean, how do we, do we write a parking ticket now, or is the county gets it?
That's what they pay them.
Okay, that's fine. As long as we get it back.
I saw, I saw a write 20 tickets. Two cars parked, double parked, down past Dog Island ramp, and all that parts of the street. I mean, they're enforcing it, I mean, and we should enforce it. Be tickets and parking tickets. Good thing.
Okay, and is there any more discussion? Have the voter done this recommendation? Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of the recommendation? Any votes? Okay, they were all in favor of Mr. Keisha, and I should chair this. Then there is no old business today, so we'll look forward to the Novia Consulting Group project, item one, progress of the Southeast End of Sea project, and we have an additional review exhibit quote for additional parallel off-street parking on the north side of Southeast End of Sea, discussion of possible action being changed.
Thank you, I believe that you have had an exhibit in your package for that additional parking, along with change order amount from the contractor. The dollar amount is $12,180, that includes all the work, paving and landscaping material to be installed there.
Okay, did you all get to see the, and then that would make the total project just over $115,000? And what do you all think about, how do you feel about? Any comments this time?
A normal-sized truck pulling a normal-sized trailer, that would be, those three spots would be a parking spot for one truck and trailer.
No, no, in fact, a truck and trailer would probably occupy two of those spaces.
I walked up down the street and I counted trucks and the number of parking spaces they took up, and they were taking, eating three spots. And they don't need to cover all total, but when you put a 40-foot trailer and a 16-foot truck.
That's true. There are.
They park them right in the middle, and, you know, you got to back them, back them in and park.
That's true, there are some that would, that would certainly.
Most of them now just park up and down Marine Street. I mean, they start at the pavilion and they park down, or they park right out to the lake.
Now, our longest parking space at the Marine Street Triangle is about. So what you're describing won't fit, parking spaces at Marine Street Triangle.
No, it, it's scary.
I bet it's all the guys.
I mean, we're doing our best, it's the space we got to park boats, but the boats are bigger than our.
We have.
Infrastructure.
They're bigger than we are, you know, and they got, they got bigger just this past year, everything, like the trucks got bigger, boat trailers got bigger and taller, it drove past my building, and I could reach out the window and I topped the tops, tapped the tops of the boats with a stick. Huge.
You're right, you're right. I mean, these spaces are designed for typical passenger.
Well, I know these, these died on the.
And these would be good for your festivals or overflow from the various facility that's there, or, you know, that type. Businesses, future businesses.
Don't dispute the name of parking.
All the parties that are going on at the Bell.
That is a very, that is a very good parking thing for the Bell. And most, you know, most, most of the days, hours, there won't. And most, you know, most, most of the day's hours, there won't be boats. It's, it's a, you know, it's a phenomenon.
Saturday night, son.
It's a phenomenon, it just happens, and then it goes away. You know?
All right.
A sign that says automobiles only? Or small trucks?
I, I think if, I think if it becomes an issue, then, then we would consider signing it down.
That's what I would suggest, and see what, how it plays out first. You might get a boat, a boat, a truck and trailer there, you know, once a month or something. It is a little bit far away from the ramp, but we'll just, we can see how it plays out and see if we can sign it in the future. If we, if we, we have voted on this, so what do you all, do you all, are you all, want any more discussion, or are you ready to just call a vote?
We need to get on with it.
All right, then. So, do we have a motion to approve or disapprove this change order for off-street parking on the north side of Southeast Avenue C, showing conceptual? Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Allen. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
My portion to say?
No, that's fine, I was giving...
We have a second by Mr. May. Do we have any discussion?
I just have one question, I'm sure it will be done. Contractor, I'll get this change order to him today, have it ready for signature, and he is mobilizing to the site on Monday, the twenty-fourth.
Are we sure about that?
We're positive.
You said that Monday's a good...
We're positive.
I was down there last Monday at eight o'clock.
So, how long does it take, once you get some...
Um, let's...
And, and Ms. Murray, did you hear that, that Monday, the twenty-fourth?
He is required to attain substantial completion by September twenty-second, final completion by October twenty-second. That's all the resurfaces in the road, and that's, that's complete, that's it.
Pardon my forgetfulness, but that, the street that runs perpendicular to that, is that included in this?
It is.
Yeah, so it's that street, and then all the way down to the Sands Park.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, so since we're having a discussion on other items, other than the off-street parking, and we're voting on, I'll just go ahead and mention my items. I just, I want to remind you that we have brand-new curb stops stored at the old water plant, Tampa Mountain Park, that was supposed to be used here. And then also, we've got plenty of mill asphalt there. But we're gonna have mill asphalt off Avenue C, too, right?
We will, yes.
And would they, would they want to go ahead and use that on First Street, instead of transporting mill asphalt from...
I, I think we could allow that to be his option, unless you require the use of the mill material, and you're in a stockpile.
Well, we could use the stockpile somewhere else, but if he needs more, if he doesn't have enough, Avenue C is fairly thin and a lot of pocket, if he doesn't have enough, he can use it from local.
That's true, yes.
So what is it most convenient?
Right, okay.
Does that seem okay for y'all? Is that, is that all right? All right, so, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. All right, then, we'll move forward to the Northwest Avenue B project, all regarding project, progress of the CDBG grant agreement documents, review, codes, and project dates, including the community awareness meeting, projected bid letting date, bid opening date, projected contract award, and discussion of possible action being changed.
The mayor asked if we bring in an exhibit, just to refresh your memory on this project on Avenue B. May remember it. This is CDBG grant, grant amount of six hundred fifty thousand dollars, and the city's matching portion for this project is three hundred ten thousand. There's also money from a remaining CDBG project that was done in the nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven budget year, and that amount is sixty-five thousand dollars. So, by my calculation, that puts the total project amount just over, I don't know...
One million twenty thousand?
One million twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
I guess that's a little more than, a little. Okay. Notices went out to residents within five hundred feet of the project on the thirteenth, for a public meeting to be held on August the eighth, from five until seven in the evening. There was a correction, actually, that correction's being mailed out today to clarify the project limits that was described in the narrative. We're still on track for a landing date of late September, and we expect to receive bids back sometime in late October, and award in November, and we would give the notice to proceed, I estimate we would give the notice to proceed sometime after Thanksgiving.
That would be good after the hurricanes.
Right.
Okay, so, I'm just trying, I don't know which way I want to look at it. This is the first time I'm seeing it, but it's good, thank you. You all see down there, there's some good stormwater management down, coming off of Upper Third Street, down Avenue B, and then it goes down to, I guess, the back of the box on Fourth Street, it goes on that bay. That is some badly needed stormwater management in that area. And then, do you, I see you have both sidewalks there on the west side of Fourth Street.
That's right.
And will that connect up, how, how does that connect up to the, they'll have to cross Fourth Street, come up to the west side to get on the crosswalk?
On the, that's on Avenue A?
Yes, sir.
Yes, there, right, there's an existing crosswalk there that will be maintained.
Okay, yes. And is that in the budget, or is this one of these unmet needs?
That particular, of course, that's...
Unmet needs. That would be good, if we could have a sidewalk there to look up to that crosswalk that was part of the program.
So what, what, Fourth Street, I know, what, where the, that, clouded lines, I'm just...
Okay, um, let me make sure I'm your point, what I think you are.
And bring your microphone, I have to go closer to this.
Just, this is probably, this is, sure, that, that's a big ditch, that's a problem. That would be a concrete ditch into a side drain under those driveways, and then there's an existing head wall here, that goes out to the bay, or to, and that's what we're making, too. The, the, the profile of Fourth Street there is, it's got a sump right where that head wall is, and that's the only way for water to get in there.
Okay, then, a sidewalk goes all the way from Ryan Drive or Left Street all the way to Third Street, or Avenue B, south side of that.
Yes.
Will these side streets, are, are you resurfacing some of the side streets, or they have said unmet needs?
If you're referring to the, the parts that extend up to the north and the radius returns, or, or to the south towards ninety-eight?
To the south towards ninety-eight.
Okay. Yes, they are, those will receive the same treatment? Now, I should clarify.
Okay.
The, the way the grant is structured, there are multiple additive alternates, in fact, there are ten with this project. It's, it's quite complex in terms of bidding. So there's an option to resurface only, there's also an alternate to reconstruct with curb and gutter, and depending on how those bids come in, and how the money fits within the grant budget, we'll elect to do one or the other.
Okay. So some, at least, some of those side streets will be resurfaced.
Right.
And that would be coming from Ryan Drive, there would be down Ninth Street, are you, are you doing that?
Ninth, Ninth Street...
It was just resurfaced?
Was resurfaced. Now, this option includes the curb and gutter and sidewalk, for my...
They can do that on a new resurface?
It, um...
That's brand new, that, I mean, I've barely been there a year, that, that street will be resurfaced.
That's true, and if you're gonna, if you build a street with curb and gutter, typically you would do reconstruction. You would, you would not add curb and gutter to a rural section street. So, that option would be for reconstruction of mine. That, that may be one that we elect not to do.
Okay, so I, I would want to dig up that, I mean, that brand-new asphalt.
Yep.
And then over, really, what we need, need to pull, would be Tenth Street. Then you have, is it certainly gonna be, then resurfaced on Eighth Street between Fishers Line and the IGA?
Yes.
And off-street parking?
Yes.
Seventeen parking spaces, something like that, sure. So now you've got your festival parking plus the, and parking for the business, and parking for the high school. And then on over to Seventh Street, the same thing as Eighth Street, it's gonna be resurfaced no matter what, looks like they're gonna go, and help their driveway acre there on the IGA, will you get?
That's right.
Okay. And Mayor, would you use the microphone a little bit? Okay. We don't need to see anything here. And twelve parking places on the east side of the IGA. And then some partial parking on Sixth, I mean, resurfacing on Sixth Street?
Yes.
Okay. And resurfacing, some of these, though, are unmet needs, all these streets won't be resurfaced, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, when these folks come in to see you on August the eighth, you'll discuss with them where their driveway acres are, and make sure that that's acceptable?
That's right, and, you know, we'll, we'll note any of their concerns, we'll have a, have a comment box and comment forms, they can write written comments, and we'll respond to each of those.
What if they don't come into the meeting? Will we reach out to these that have driveway here, so that we don't have to go back and redo them?
Yes. Individual homes, if, if they don't show up, we'll make an attempt. And if we don't hear from them, I think the best we can do is to place the driveway back where Paramore is.
And will that be concrete or asphalt for the acre?
Those are concrete acres.
Okay.
Incidentally, from the notices that went out, we did hear from Sharon Willis from the IGA, and they can't attend the meeting, but we're gonna meet with them separately this Thursday at all hours.
All right, and you haven't had any other special requests like that?
No.
Okay, because I, just with all due respect on the funding and meeting, having special meetings, you know, I, we're, we're short on funding, so, for next year. We've just had our budget pushed off. Okay. Do y'all have any more questions regarding this preliminary design here? I just, I know y'all haven't been able to see it, but I'll loan mine, if any of y'all want to take a look at it, for now, while we're finishing our meeting. But I'd love to have it back.
For the public meeting itself, we'll have large exhibits that will, like a roll plot that will include all, this is one exhibit, and we'll take it to the wall, so it's clear.
All right. I don't, I don't believe there's anything to motion on at this point. Do y'all have any issues? Okay, then, we appreciate you bringing those preliminary conceptual scores to look at, and we look forward to Avenue C getting underway.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the environmental consulting technology projects, item one, Marine Street trying to park it on, review, project completion timeline, discussion of possible action being changed.
Okay, I brought the contract for the mayor to sign, and then I will drop them off for Northport Asphalt to sign, so we'll have a complete executed contract, so we will issue them the notice to proceed in an email and a phone call with their representative yesterday, they're gonna start mobilizing on the, on the thirty-first, is what their estimated start date is. In our plan, in our specs, we had, they haven't had it done within a hundred and thirty-five days, I don't think it'll take them that long. So I would think if we want to take them, they should be done by, probably by the end of October, far removed from, you know, major delays. But everything else, I think we are still good to go, if there's any other problems with that, just to get the contracts signed.
Okay. I, I wanted to ask you about the power pole relocation.
We'll get, we'll have to get the surveyor out there, the contractors, and the contractors, he's supposed to go out there and have them, get the surveyor to flag it, and then we can get some energy out there, so we can...
Okay, so the, the site, contract, construction manager's gonna oversee that?
Yes.
And is that included in the quote?
Yes.
Okay, that's already included, so we won't be getting, we'll, we'll...
No.
All right, that's very good.
We only did work that out, I think, at a time, we talked to them, to have them come out there, do that, but they didn't move it.
They can move them, but I, I don't know if we worked out the cost, though, because they didn't know at the time, when they looked at it, but we just had to pay to want to be moved on another project, and it was pretty expensive, eight hundred...
Well, just adjusting lines, you weren't, you were looking, was that power pole?
That was moving a pole.
Okay. Make money, it was eight hundred and twenty dollars.
We'll find out, then, because I don't, I know, I know we talked to them about trying to do that, I think they're, they're supposed to be in there, so we can find out for sure on that one. I guess, we'll get, we'll get it out, and the surveyors go out there now and have it done, just to, to delay anything else, too. They have a little bit of prep work, didn't they? So, and we're moving, I'm gonna, we're not, I don't know if we're moving, we never have one, so, I don't know, yeah.
We're, you know, we, we need to know, you know, if there's gonna be an extra cost, we certainly want to know who's gonna oversee that, you know, if something might show up at the end, or, 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 or project. Right, okay. Do y'all have questions for Miss Susan regarding this parking lot project, we just want to see it get underway? Do we want to have a groundbreaking ceremony, or anything like that? And I have one person who says it would be cool, not a picture, but how would that be to schedule a groundbreaking ceremony?
You can buy us a schedule for that thirty-first, you'll stay in the morning. We can advise to schedule it for that 31st, staying in the morning, probably.
July 31st, we know there's something, unless it went right, but we can stay.
It's Monday. Yeah, it should be the Monday, last Monday of the month.
We had a groundbreaking ceremony in August, we're there, would that be considered a meeting, and we had to make a public notice? No, no, okay. Probably kickoff, maybe, otherwise they're something, yeah. All right, no talking, just smiling. All right, so, if you could plan on that, okay, groundbreaking ceremony, for July 31st, at what time you said?
I'll find out for the time, if they have, yes, until the time yet, I can ask them when I can contact them.
Okay, all right, thank you. And we've won all of our CRA board members, and, 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 I don't know if Mr. Harper's there or not, he happens to be passing through, he's been great.
I'm passing through all evening.
Okay, please do.
I'm counting fast.
Yes. How will the public be notified about the lack of that triangle parking, since it's already being so heavily outerlifting, marked off, fenced off, safely kept, whatever?
I think they have it in them to put some barricade around that, or even construction. So, when they were doing it, well, they were actually putting, like, some things around, so nobody blocked off, and the environment was, you know.
Sure, they'll be thrilled to see that it's still there.
Right.
Tourist season.
Right.
Have we been working on this one for how long? Three years, or something like that? Or you all, Mr. Pearlie was still living when we started working on this?
My, my other comment, which I made before, and I'll make again, I have a problem with CRA signage, or lack of, I would hope that there would be signage identified on this parking project, with some completion date identified, so the people who are going to be angry, going to be inconvenienced, will have some light at the end of the tunnel. And not just some little sign on the snow fence, but something that will be easily seen by people who are gonna come, because they think they're gonna drive in there on August 1st.
Right.
So, please do that, I, that's just public relations. And your CRA at work, I, I would just...
I think you have some signage, like, you do...
Yes, it's funny, about CRA.
We've got a couple notes, we've, we've, give a timeline.
Is there room to stick something on it?
Like a...
Just please do that, for the people who are gonna be so inconvenienced, because there's so much of that parking that's being used now, and so the access to it will also be affected, and really don't want people to be angry, so, please, they'll have some.
It might be better, but the sooner the later, we kind of get a notification out there. We put a notice on some of the calls, the utility calls, like we do for no parking in the festival? Certainly could put one up, Fishers, like, station.
Would be interested, voice to radio, and...
Yeah, voice to radio, probably, PSA, ACGA. But so many of those people with those Georgia license plates that we all see on the trucks, don't listen to Oyster, don't rate the paper, don't have local communication, so, nice big sign. Go a long way, I think, to make people feel better about it.
Spell it in Georgia, and just spell it.
I'm sorry, what? You didn't talk into your mic.
Do we spell it in Georgia easier, or do we just spell it in normal English?
I think just something courteous, like, projected completion date, thank you for your patience.
I'll just go.
Hard, hard yes? Hard, hard, okay. Okay, is there any more comment? All right, I was just thinking about the Avenue B project, guess there'll have to be a sign or two. Okay, but they're being well notified now. All right, any more on this item, on the parking lot? Okay. Item two, the Marine Street Pavilion and Waterfront Fishing Care Improvement Project, report and documentation project, the proposed timeline for engineering and design work, discussion of possible action, any changes?
I thought, start a print, get in the list of, of, action items, that, you know, where we have items that will need to be submitted to contractors to get close. Our first task is to put together a commencement document, which includes the boundary survey, and a bid estimate form, which allows to itemize everything that we want to do, and get costs, have the costs in there. DEP has to approve that, for any, for, that's due to DEP by the end of October, I think it's October 28th, the date we have right now in there. So, that's what we're working on right now, is, that's, let's be first, give the cost. We've got every, all the other documents, we have the survey, we have the title information, we just need to get all the costs together.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that we want, I do anyway, to, we've been, this has been going on now for over two years, this, this project, to, to focus on getting the pavilion and the fishing pier and the dock, you know, those, those, those things repaired, and then we'll work on the items like picket tables and such, later, later on. In fact, that might be something we're, you can order from our office.
Right, we have three years to do the money, so that, I think, right now, as part of the plan, is we don't have to spend it all now, it's just, they have to approve the cost of what, what they've got, and that's why I just kind of wanted to put everything in there, so we don't come back later, and so we, after, have to get something every approved from them, since it did take so long. In our, in our original supplemental, we talked about, was replacing some of those, because that was under the pavilion, and we wanted to make sure we were covered, you know.
Yeah, so we want, we need picket tables there, the...
Right.
And, and, the dock, and all, the Coast Guard dock, all of that needs fleets, and it's, it's, and that, is repaired, it's really not safe, and, you know, sooner the better, but, we can't pay until next year's budget.
Right, okay. And no disruption later.
We did, as soon as possible, if we can't pay for it, three months, so, it's in next year's budget, it's not, it's not budgeted, even though we thought it was, it's not now.
And that's one thing, I think, I don't know if you got a chance to look at the list then, too, is, kind of just see what else there was, 'cause I know we talked about possibly the handrail on the, the Coast Guard dock, but it looks, I, you know, it looks in pretty good shape, do you want to have them include a cost, and what my thought is, too, we can have them itemized, so if there's something you don't necessarily want to do now, maybe do the decking, and have them, you know, inspecting structural supports, the way, the handrail doesn't, you know, I'm just not sure, I know that they definitely, on the pavilion, and that fishing pier, that was, that was a really important issue, so...
I had a picture of that, let me see, I had it at the last day, I may have left it at home, that handrail, but we can take a look at it, see.
And I do have this one, too, I wanted to ask you all, the fishing stairs for the fishing pier has a metal link rail, too, is that something you want to now equip that also, or, I'm not, I don't know if that was just a thing that was...
Why, I think this court might know, why that has two handrails like that? That handrail's been there longer than me. Which one, though? The metal one? The whole pavilion? Oh, the whole thing? I thought that wasn't here when that was put in.
The metal, we were found, the biggest...
The metal rail is the ADA compliant rail.
Okay.
The other one was already there, they had that, they, they get, go in with the accessibility ramp, down to the pudding dock.
Well, maybe that's at the pavilion, I'm sorry. But the same thing was true, that double, the double rail isn't accessible.
Wait, so you're, when you're going downstairs, you have to have rails, or...
Hold on, hold on. And yet, you can grasp?
Yes.
Well, maybe we don't want to have this, this wood railing, two railings, maybe just, just a metal rail on each side, not, you know, not on...
It's children, it's children.
It's children?
Yeah, it would be a...
My goodness.
Does it have to be double, a double rail with that?
You can, you can do that by putting in two metal, other, two rails, but, actually, you can come off of a wood rail, yes, come off of one.
Yeah, one rail that does both things, right now, it's two rails.
So, that'd be two, you know, we could just do brackets coming off of the wood. It could, you know, it's some way to save money, you know, and not have to do double rails. I wanted to mention about the sidewalk, Ms. Tamron had talked about repairing the sidewalk of going to the old Coast Guard dock, and, I wish I had a picture with me, on June the 30th, I was out there for about an hour, and a shrimp boat pulled up, and a big pickup truck pulled up, a refrigerator truck, and then a forklift pulled up, and the forklift was maneuvering all over the Coast Guard dock, and up and down the ramp, and then the pickup truck was parked up the four-inch thick concrete sidewalk, and backed up as far as it could get to the, to the banister where the ramp starts on the, on the Coast Guard dock. That concrete doesn't, can't hold that weight, and that's why the sidewalk is torn up now. That's supposed to be all recreational dock, but I personally don't mind if the shrimp boat comes and pulls up and unloads, and it was there for 30 minutes ago, I don't, I don't mind that, I don't have it anywhere at this point, or they could go to the morgues. But I do mind if they pull their truck up on the sidewalk, break up the sidewalk, or crush the outbound sewer line from the fish tanks, and, so, you know, we were, I was thinking, but we can't fund it right now, but maybe we'll be able to, towards the middle of the year, we'll see how our funds go, that this, or if there's funds in this project remaining with bullards, is that how you say, these traffic, those traffic stops, out there in the, in that sidewalk by Marine Street, so a truck can't pull up in there. I don't know how we'll stop the forklift from coming, because we want to have wheelchairs, carts, and stuff, to be able to have access to forklift, and it's about the size of, bigger than your chair, though, but we could still get on that rail, and, so, we'll have to probably think about that, how to figure that, is that on, like, the decking, and then have forklifts right on, they're more than welcome, that's just my opinion, to dolly it out there, to the truck, but, you know, to tear up, and use facilities that aren't built adequately to handle that, so, once that gets done, and we want to try to get that cement, that concrete repaired as well, but it's no need to do it now, to keep the, the...
I have a question. Hold on, when you go around to get on the little ramp, or platform for the handicap and the board, that is so shallow in there, that if you're not in there tight tight, it's, it's almost impossible to get a lift in there, and, I know the dredge in that out there would be a problem, but we do, that is, resource to do that, if you're worried about it.
That would be able to be done under this one, but we have to find some other, that was a part of the dredging, you know, dredging, it's a lot more intensive.
If you're worried about, maybe, you can do that.
But there's a lot of other dregs we could do for that one.
All right, did you all picture your list, then, of items to be done? Okay. Do y'all have any questions for Miss Susan regarding this project? The public have questions? Maybe we just want to get it underway as soon as possible, without the three months?
Yeah.
All right, and then, the next one is the CRA board projects, and, so, we have here review project selection for fiscal year 2017, 18, discussion of possible action, but I think we reviewed that pretty much during our budget workshop, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. The project that I had, that I would have liked to have submitted, was the one I just talked about, the bullards, is that how you say it, Miss Susan?
Ballards.
Ballards, okay. And then, the other one, and I mentioned to y'all about the egress and the post office, that it needs to, we've gotten some MDOT recommendations, how to change that outbound driveway onto 98, where people won't drive into it. And I was actually over there speaking with Mr. Boe, one afternoon, and I went to put the mail in there. There, there we are, standing there, and just vehicles are flying through, just the wrong way, yeah, backwards, so, you know, eventually, we'll need to do something, or try to figure out a way to re-mark that parking lot, maybe, next year, before that do happen, or, you know, we just have to see how it goes. Did y'all, do y'all have anything on your mind, or projects, that we can just, as Miranda said, put that in the back of your head?
I can have a full, like...
Okay, so, and then, our budget workshop recommendations, would this be where we would vote, now, Piesha, on our budget, that we would want to submit to the city? We would want to hold off and let folks review that?
Yeah, let's get a little closer to the budget here.
Okay, all right, so we've put that on there in August, so we'll not vote on that budget at this time. Okay? And are there any other items that the CRA board members provide to bring forth? Okay, then, may I have a motion to adjourn, or not to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Powell, a second by Mr. May, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And hopes? Okay, and the motion carries, and thank you, folks, very much, and thank you, appointed members, for your volunteer board.